It's six P M. We'll call the meeting to order. The first item will be our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please stand for both? Dr. Whaley, will you lead us?
Father, we just ask you to bless our decision-making process today. We pray for your hand to guide us, your wisdom to direct us. Help us discern the right course of action in all matters. Make our choices as line with your will and benefit all of our citizens. We ask you, Father, to make us tolerant of each other's strengths and our weaknesses and our issues and just help us treat each other with dignity and grace. Bless this meeting. Bless this wonderful country, Father, that gives us our opportunity to be here and to do as he would have us do. Jesus' name, amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, approval of minutes from previous meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review. Is there a motion to approve minutes from March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five?
I so moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
March the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, council workshop minutes, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Approval of agenda or motion to amend agenda? Is there either?
Make a motion, we amend the agenda.
Okay, what are you?
I want to remove six D and table that for further discussion.
Six D?
Six D.
Okay.
Fannie County Water Authority Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay. Anything else?
I believe that's it. We've got reports in here, so I think we're good. Is there anything else we need to add?
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The first item, number five, is a public hearing. This is an ordinance, this is a second hearing, so this is going to be an ordinance to amend chapter eighteen of the Solid Waste Code of the City of Blue Ridge. And what I want to do, first of all, I'm going to ask Chuck to review what we have in place currently, and then I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. I will allow those in favor or opposed to any of the changes to speak, and then the council will vote. So at this time, let me turn it over to our city attorney, and he can go over the changes.
Thank you, Mayor. So what is at your place tonight is a revised version of the proposed ordinance that was the subject of the first reading at the last meeting. What I did was we gathered feedback from the elected officials, I gathered feedback from some of the stakeholders, and what I attempted to do was to make changes to the ordinance or the proposed ordinance on those items where I felt like there was consensus. And so that's not always easy to determine when there's consensus, but I tried to make the changes where I felt like there was support for those changes. So just to go over what is different about what's before you tonight than what was presented at the first meeting. I did leave in place the deletion on the limit of the number of permits. There was a fair amount of feedback on whether to maintain the current limit, whether to separate commercial and residential and have different limits for both. But at the end of the day, it appeared to me that the consensus was for there not to be a numerical limit on the number of permits. Now, I do want to point out that when someone makes application, there is a public hearing, and they have to get approval from the council. And in the existing ordinance, and this doesn't change, one of the things that the council can consider is whether the city is already adequately served by, you know, the current number of permit holders. And so that is a factor that the council can use in determining whether to issue another permit. Yeah, I did delete the requirement that providers have to collect both residential and commercial. So this allows a provider to provide residential service or commercial service or both. There were several different places where there were references to logos and labeling, both on the trucks and on the containers and dumpsters. So in about three different places, I changed the logo and labeling requirements to hopefully make them consistent, but as a general principle, it does require both logos and labeling on trucks and containers and dumpsters. I clarified the collection times only apply to residential pickup, and I changed it to, from seven A M. to six A M.
What was the stop time?
It's still five P M. But that's only in residential. At the suggestion of one of the haulers and several others, we now use a different methodology for determining truck size when collecting from residential properties. And it now reads that trucks may not exceed sixteen thousand five hundred pounds gross vehicle weight rating, which according to my research will accommodate trucks as large as a Ford F-four-fifty or Chevy Silverado forty-five-hundred.
Can I stop you there, will I? Handle those trucks that we saw the pictures of that will pick up the dump.
I don't know the answer to that. I know that we got feedback from Justin that said that those trucks are heavier than that. I don't have any reason to doubt him in that regard. The reason I left it in there because it seemed to me that the, again, trying to determine what consensus was, that the consensus was that we didn't necessarily want trucks of those size in the residential area. So that's the reason I left it. And then the other thing is this now provides an exception for roll-off type dumpsters, and this ordinance does not apply to roll-off type dumpsters. Christie mentioned screening requirements and all on dumpsters, and that's not a bad idea. But as I mentioned in my email message, you typically would see that more in your zoning and land use code where you have development standards. So that may be something we want to look at, what we currently provide in that regard, and whether that needs to be.
If it's something that's stationary and stays there for a while, it needs to be. But a roll-off dumpster to me is something that you get when your house burns down or you're building a house for refuse. It's not for trash. It's for building materials and hauling off debris. Am I correct?
You can have a temporary roll-off dumpster.
Right, but it doesn't need to be screened. It doesn't really need to be screened.
Right. I felt like this ordinance is really more about collection.
Right.
You know, and I felt like that things like screening and all that kind of stuff would be more appropriate in the zoning.
As I view it, the screening is not the purview of the hauler. It's the purview of the property owner who has the, and so you can't, I don't see how you can ask the hauler to have any responsibility for screening.
Well, I think that's what we did there, wouldn't it, Doc? We removed that requirement, right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I think it's, even though I like the idea of screening them, and we can come at it from some other direction, but I don't think it's the job of the hauler to have to be involved in screening.
No, I don't think it's for the hauler.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, at this time then we'll, is that all basically in a nutshell?
Hold on just a second. You set the time, pickup times from seven A M.?
Residential.
If we're not using a.
Six A M.
If they're not using a truck that picks it up and manually dumps it, if these guys are coming by and they're pulling the trash bags out of a trash can and they're throwing it in a truck, they're not making any noise. They pull up quietly, they stop, they grab your trash, they throw it in the truck. Is that correct? Okay, so I'm talking residential only. And residential only, I think we're okay. Drop that back an hour because some of these guys want to get started earlier. So I think five A M. would be fine for the city if that's the case. That way they can get in here before you have to go to work and before all the traffic starts. They can get in and out.
I've watched the curb stock pickup for years and years, and there are trucks that pick up that thing from the residential, put it on there, flip it up in the air, and put it back.
Right.
Rather than pull out the bags. I want to, are we accommodating the people that have that mechanism, which to me is pretty professional, with this truck size? And somebody out there is about to tell us.
But here's, that's what I was fixing to say. I've never seen one here. The only one are the front loaders that dump the big dumpsters, and it'll roll off and on. Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about, but I don't think any of them have that. So I think, and if we find a need for that, we can always go back and revise the ordinance.
Does anybody use that mechanism here now? Well, there's two hands, so.
In a residential neighborhood.
Do you mind coming up?
Let's go and open, let's, yeah, because then we'll open up the public hearing, yep. Okay, do you guys want to hear from them before we continue the discussion? Let's hear from the public before we continue the discussion. Okay, we'll open it up for a public hearing at this time. If you will, Mary Ann and Jennifer, just we'll do a ten minutes pro, ten minutes con. So, and then we can extend that if needed. Okay, if anyone would like to speak, just please come up to the mic. And at this time.
Sorry, I have lost my voice. So, glad, appreciate y'all working on this still. Just to make it public, I still think the limit's good for mathematical business reasons, but I see your point, too. The residential, y'all keep talking about, about the dumpsters and whatever. So, but you didn't specify multifamily, and so you take your apartment complexes, that's really residential. But, so then can they run those early, can they run those late, and they have, you know, that's just something you might want to tidy up a little.
It's still residential garbage, right? It's not commercial garbage, it's still residential.
That's what I'm asking y'all, if it's multifamily, yeah.
I think in this, you can still run it at five A M.
Okay. So back to the trucks. I sent y'all the truck specs from the only three body manufacturers that I know of. James runs a compactor truck, I do, too. The only difference in the sixteen thousand five hundred pound truck and the nineteen is the brakes and a couple leaf springs on the back. They're the same truck. If we had them parked here side by side, you can't tell the difference. They're the same, everything. But those manufacturers will not place those bodies on a truck less than nineteen-five. Just, I mean, if we follow D O T. and E P D. rules, then that's cool. But if we're going to go sixteen-five, then we kind of need something from y'all to have a solution. You know, if we set that, if you set that ordinance that says sixteen, then what are we supposed to run?
So your truck that lifts is nineteen-five?
Yes, sir. And I sent you a video, thank you, May God. Anyway, it tips the cans now. James's truck tips the cans.
We're not talking about commercial cans, we're talking about single trash cans.
Thirty-five, sixty, and ninety-five gallon trash cans, yes, sir.
That's what I'm talking about, that's what I see.
Yeah, his will do both, his will do commercial dumpsters, too. Mine only does residential. I have one that tips from the side and one that tips from the back. He has one that tips from the back. So like for us, our future plan is to convert people over to provided trash cans because service is better, it's easier, you know, it's easier for our drivers. You got a semi-automatic because, you know, guys blow their backs out. That's why we like those, that's just where we're coming from. The roll-offs, I get what you're saying, too, Jack. It's kind of a, a lot of people, it's an intermittent use thing. But for me, what's upon this whole ordinance is for y'all to make trash better, for y'all to collect taxes and whatever. If you run, if you look at the roll-offs in the city, y'all are leaving five or six thousand a month on the table for taxes. That's, that's pretty big. I mean, I mean, we know we're behind on money, so it's kind of like, there's some money, just saying. We can't say we don't have money if we walk out the door and leave it, you know. James, your turn, you got anything?
I've been here all my life.
My goal.
I've been here all my life, and I started this company four and a half years ago because everywhere you look, there's trash bags on the side of the road. Trucks we use, they don't leave trash bags on the side of the road. I still use dump trucks in certain little areas, but I just think it's cleaner, it's more professional to run these trucks. Plus, it's not so bad on your shoulders when you're throwing them four foot over the top of your head.
So you're talking about the nineteen-five on the lift truck?
Yeah.
That's what you both.
I got one outside.
That's okay. That's what you both are asking for is to go up three thousand pounds so that you can run your lift trucks.
Yes.
I don't see a problem with that.
They're just more efficient. They pack more.
We just don't want twenty-six thousand. We don't want the waste management trucks that are huge on the residential streets, that's all. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, they're not that big. And everywhere else we go, Jack, on our route, we can't run their trucks no way. I mean, it's all, I mean, they're too big. Driveways, you know the road, Jack, we can't run them.
I just don't want them big heavy trucks. I don't think any of us, I think we've talked about this, want those big heavy trucks busting up the roads here. We're having a problem keeping everything paid.
We couldn't buy one, if you had everybody in the city, fourteen, it wouldn't justify one of those trucks for us. We have to have a truck that'll run us countywide, because otherwise it'd never pay for itself.
So you need the nineteen-five for your side loaders and rear loader?
Yeah.
Okay. Chuck, we're good with that, go ahead. If everybody else, if the rest of the council's in agreement, let's go ahead and change that in the ordinance. I understand, Doc.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, Richie?
Yeah, I'm Richie Walker. I represent Allen Disposal out of Howaussie. I've talked to a few of y'all about commercial. We don't deal so much with residential. I used to do it a lot with Advanced Disposal when they took over all this years ago. But when you start talking about trash up here, there's, some of these other guys can tell you commercial is a lot different than residential. We all know that. And like you was talking about, a roll-off dumpster. Y'all have got a lot of, not a lot, but there's a few companies around in the city limits, they've gotten a better deal from other people with roll-offs, set them there permanently. And they'll pull them, you know, maybe once every two or three months or something. But the commercial trucks with the front load cans, they are heavier. You don't, you don't want them on these streets. What we try to do is, with us and anybody else, is try to be smart with the customer. Make sure they got enough service, make sure they got the biggest, you know, the biggest cans. With a customer, a lot of times on a sales point, just like anybody else, they're trying to save all the money they can. So I think it's with trash service, keeping it neat in the cities, like I've talked to Christie. I think each customer should make sure they've got enough trash service. You know, if they've got a business that's open five to seven days a week, you know, one day a week ain't going to service them enough.
Like restaurants, probably.
Restaurants and stuff like that, plus it keeps the smell down and stuff like that. So that's another thing to keep in mind, too, is not only just the carrier's part, but, you know, part on the customer's part, too, keeping stuff clean. I know when people get off the train here, the first thing that fills up is that garbage can when you train a lot of times, so. But you can't, you can't police it, monitor all of it, you can't. But we just try to give each customer the best, the best service. And if they need to go up on their service, we need to have that conversation with them as a provider. So thank y'all.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, we will close the public hearing, and the council, do you guys have any further discussion before vote?
You got what we want to change?
Yeah, and I'll help with the motion if y'all are okay with that. I think what I'm hearing is we would have a motion to approve ordinance B R. two oh two five dash oh seven as presented with two additional changes. One to section eighteen dash fifteen dash eight to allow for collection times in residential pickup, for residential pickup to begin at five A M. And then to change section eighteen dash five, I'm sorry, eighteen dash fifteen ten from sixteen thousand five hundred pounds gross vehicle weight rating to nineteen thousand five hundred pounds gross vehicle weight rating. And I can help Mary Ann with the minutes, and then I will make those changes to the ordinance so that they're included when we actually sign the ordinance.
Is there a motion as been read by Chuck Connerly?
I will make the motion as Chuck has read it. And I would ask my garbage folks, if you don't mind, when you're in a residential area, five A M., be as quiet as you possibly can.
Okay. Is there? Well, let us finish this, sorry. We're right in the middle of the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote since this is an ordinance. Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Okay, Jack?
Yes.
And Christie?
Yes.
And let's just give him a chance to say one thing.
Now, there is no numerical limit, Doc.
Okay.
With the same caveat that I said earlier, that is a consideration for the council in deciding whether to grant a permit, and that is whether, in their view, the city is already adequately served. So that is something they can consider, but the hardline numerical limit is taken.
When I was on the crime commission, we did, the issue of how many taxi cab companies were to be allowed to go on the airport.
To go on the airport?
Airport, Atlanta Airport. And Kerry Limousine Service was owned by a good friend of mine, and they had the lion's share of the business. The mayor at the time was very adamant about having minority providers. And it was widely debated about how you go about adding, you know, when you've got Goliath out there, how do you add? My concern here is that we've, I'm told we have ten or eleven people that are picking up that don't have permits. And if we're going to have an ordinance, I believe that it needs to be appropriately managed by somebody. Let me finish, by somebody. And that we don't dilute the product so that the pieces of pizza aren't big enough to make it worthwhile for the people that are chipping in to buy the pizza. And I'm not claiming to know exactly how to do that. But I believe that, as we have heard repeatedly, and I've said repeatedly, I want the guy to be able to pick up garbage. We aren't managing it well now. And so we have to consider as a council how you're going to now manage this ordinance and give permits and give the right number.
Let me answer that for you. We're going into executive session. We've already taken care of that.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and we will announce something after executive, yep, so it should be good. Okay, so moving on, action item number six, the items under that. The first ones are from the water department. Becky, I'm going to ask you to come up to the mic in case there are any questions. And we are not, it's my understanding, we will not have to do a budget amendment for these items. And Michael's going to come up as well, and we're going to talk a little bit about these expenses. And then you guys can approve the question.
Y'all welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the business if you want.
I'm Becky Harkins. I'm the utilities director for City of Blue Ridge. And I have three purchase items on the agenda under the action items, and I wanted Michael to clear up some of the finance questions before we approached these so that everybody had a clear mind about where we stood.
So related to the water department, water and sewer department in particular, three things. One of them is the water department has in its fund one point four million dollars today. The second is in terms of the results for the water department so far this year and the budget amendment. I've looked at the first quarter for the water department, and the water department during the quarter looks to be far enough ahead of budget so that it will be able to pay for this, these additional expenses by exceeding the budget for the year. So it is substantially ahead. Were there any other things, Becky, you wanted me to cover?
I don't think so, just to say maybe.
Now, my understanding is that we are, we have, we have money that we'd allocated to purchase this item that we're not purchasing anyway, so there's ninety thousand or eighty-six thousand twelve dollars in there that we want to reallocate to these things, and there'll be some money left over. That's the short edition of a long story, correct?
So that was the original thought, and as Michael dove further into the finances, he realized that we wouldn't have to repurpose that money. We can leave it there where it is in case we do need that capital outlay equipment expenditure anytime this year. And that we're going to be generating enough additional revenue that we can cover these expenditures.
Okay.
Okay.
So the first item is a used truck for the water distribution department. And I believe Denny has spoke with some of y'all about that purchase. There are a couple of quotes in your packet. The truck is twenty-one thousand dollars.
Do you want us to vote on them?
No, I'll go through all three of them.
Go through all three and give us a recommendation, and then we will vote on it that way.
Okay, so the recommendation on the truck is the twenty-one thousand dollar truck. That's the cheaper of the like models and miles.
That's a Chevrolet?
It is. The second item is a quote from Southern Corrosion for a tank mixer. You have two quotes in there. The quote from Southern Corrosion is thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars. It was the lesser of the two quotes, and Denny met with the guy and thought he really knew what he was talking about and can meet what we need to do to make the E P D. recommendations from the sanitary survey on the Kukkane water storage tank. The third quote is also from Southern Corrosion for a tank maintenance program for the next five years. That means they go in, they inspect our tanks, they paint our tanks, they fix anything that's wrong with our tanks for the next five years. And we had already had thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget for that. So that's just increasing by six thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars a year for a total of forty-one thousand two sixteen a year for the tank maintenance.
What tanks you're speaking of?
So you have water storage tanks in Blue Ridge and in Mineral Bluff. And you have to do maintenance on those tanks, just like you would any other piece of your infrastructure. Sometimes that requires divers to go in the tanks and do inspections. Sometimes it requires draining the tanks and doing maintenance. It's a pretty extensive service on a yearly basis, but that's also an E P D. recommendation based on our recent sanitary survey.
Okay, so the three quotes that are given, do I have a motion to accept these?
Salute.
Is there a second? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
And Christie?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, booster pump station improvements. And this is C N S. project number B seven nine seven oh.
Yes, so this is a project you guys have previously heard about. We have a water booster pump station in Mountain Tops and one in Eagles Nest. Those stations were built and put into service in the late nineteen eighties. They're acquiring hefty maintenance fees currently, and it's time to do a rehabilitation on those so we don't experience failure at those stations. And we have a D F A. grant loan for those stations, and they're going to give us fifty percent principal forgiveness on that. We did a scoring card. We had two bidders on that project. There was a two point four percent difference in the bid amounts. But based on the scorecard, and there was a scoring from Matt Smith with Carter and Slope Engineering, there was a scoring from Denny as our project manager. I did a scoring on the bidders. And then James Weaver, who has experience with them, also did a scoring. Those scores were averaged, and based on the scores, the recommendation is to go with sole construction for eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, based on their previous good history with the City of Blue Ridge and the fact that their primary focus is on stations.
So they're going to forgive us, so we've got about a four hundred thousand dollar payout on that?
Correct.
And this is all part of our long-term capital outlay. And I'm sure some of you saw in the paper, city sixteen million in debt. And I'm sure some of you saw in the paper, city sixteen million in debt. We are actually very financially secure. We have spent money deliberately since Mayor Green was in office. And when I came into office, I believe we were like twelve million in debt. We have deliberately made improvements to our water system, sewer system, so that we can serve our community. Without these capital outlay projects, uh, you may not have drinking water, you may not have sewer services. And aging infrastructure, we do not want, uh, failure. So the things we're doing are to protect our community, to offer services to our community. In addition, we've done projects like, um, the, uh, downtown storm drain project. But we're working with the state, with federal government, with grants, with state. And we're making sure we manage your money wisely. And that we offer the services that you all deserve as a community and we're also extending those into the county. One thing the paper didn't mention that the other day when they talked about the debt was the fact that we have had at that same time almost ten million dollars in our checking accounts. And that's not to mention the fact of our, our buildings and properties we own are probably, just, I'm a real estate broker. I would say upward of eighty million. We are in great financial shape. And Michael is going to focus on that a bit more, talking about our credit ratings and how we are perceived. Uh, this particular council also, it said they find out that they're sixteen in debt. They've known that because we've been voting on these projects, we've been looking at our budgets. They've been part of the budgets for twenty years. So I hope no one just found out about it, 'cause that would concern me, wouldn't it you? It would be very alarming. So just, I want to reassure the public that we as a city are very financially secure. We are managing your money wisely. And anyone in the public is welcome to come into City Hall and look at our audits, look at anything we've done over the years and look at our assets. Go with me and look at our water treatment plant and our sewer plant. And you will be very impressed with the technology, I promise you. Um, with that being said, we need, I guess, to vote on this issue, 'cause we're about to spend more money for you guys. Um, so on the bid project, do we have a, do we have a motion?
A move.
Yep, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, so everybody's approved on that one. Okay, Becky, you can sit down now. Um, and we may have voted on that, I got a little carried away right there, so, anyway. Quotes for the culvert replacement at Industrial Park. Denny, can you come up and tell us a bit about this? I will say, I drove over the morning this happened. And this is right there where the animal control's located. And it really, it was totally flooded, almost washed the road away. Of course, my biggest concern was not the road, it was the animals, so I was ready to get out and start rescuing animals. But, uh, anyway, Denny and the crew got it under control, but we're gonna have to get it fixed.
Yeah, and in your packet you have three different quotes from three different people. And, uh, I think the lowest one is Holloway Trenching. I think he's the cheaper of the three. To deal with it, just to bring the public up to speed, what happened is the last huge rain event we had, then the flooding stage down there where the animal shelters at on Industrial Road, um, it pretty much undermined that whole culvert and it's collapsing. So we're gonna have to replace it because the next event, it won't survive it. And we have a ten-inch water main and you have a eight or nine inch, or eight or ten-inch gas main that runs across that too. So we have to replace it, it's, it's not a, the county met with us. And my whole point behind having the county meet with us is to see if they could help us, but they don't have the equipment to reach it either. And neither do we. So, in your packet, um, like I said, you have three different quotes. I can't remember the totals on all three of them, but you can bring that up when y'all vote on it. I mean, if any of y'all got any questions, I'll do my best to answer it.
Let me ask you this, the, the low bid is two hundred ninety-one thousand and the other ones are in the four hundred range.
Uh, one is, yeah, Jeff Holloway, uh, Holloway Trenching is two ninety-one and some change. And then Whitners was, uh, three fifty-six, I believe. And then North Georgia, who done our storm drain downtown, come in at four hundred and, I think, four hundred and one.
Do, do you have confidence in the low bidder?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Well, I thought that's a no-brainer as far as that goes.
Same word?
Yes. I made sure that everybody done apples, apples. 'Cause I went through and changed everything on them when North Georgia Concrete come back, 'cause they quoted concrete first and it's like seven hundred fifty-six thousand. So I was like, yeah, no. So we're gonna go back with culverts, we're gonna go back with, uh, HDPE, which is basically huge plastic culverts or sixteen-inch plastic culverts, but they're rated like concrete culverts, just so everybody kinda understands what's going on. Uh, there's, there'll be two sections of it, that's eighty feet apiece, you got a hundred and sixty feet of culvert that we're gonna replace. Uh, we will do the benching back, putting everything back, building the head walls and everything else to control the flooding. So the next time it happens, it won't happen like that again, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Red motion?
I move we accept the low bid from, uh, Holloway Trenching of two hundred ninety-one thousand seventy-five dollars and eight cents.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Uh, Jack?
Yes.
And Christie?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, the next item is, um, Downtown Picnic Table Project. Christie, do you want to talk about that?
Okay.
So since I'd been in office, since I'd been in office, I'd since I'd been in office, I'd had several locals and stuff mention about having shade downtown next to the park and stuff. Um, so, uh, we were walking around, Gerald and I was kinda looking, I think Angie had went down there with us at, at, at one point. And where the Labor Day barbecue is, there's lighting underneath, there's, um, outlets and plugins and stuff. And I met with Ms. Hammond, 'cause she'd got the grant for it, super knowledgeable. Um, to where I was trying to come up with a solution to where it can be versatile, not just one day a year for the, or one weekend a year for the Labor Day barbecue. And, um, we'd kinda came up with an idea of putting like a fake picnic table over it so it can be removed and taken off for that one, wh- when they use the fire pits, but then for any other events or functions, or if you're down there with the, at the park or, you know, wanna take your lunch down there to sit out, that you will have picnic tables and stuff sitting in the shade. There's plugins, so if you wanna take, you know, your computer or whatever it might be, um, to have a, another space to eat and sit and enjoy our beautiful downtown. So, um, that's what the picnic table is. And I don't know if we can use SPOSS money or part of it or anything like that, 'cause it could be used for events, but I was mainly looking at it for our locals to be able to go and sit down and utilize our park area.
And I think we could probably use Hotel Motel because it is a tourist.
Yeah, yeah.
Because SPOSS, I don't think we could use it for SPOSS, because of the specifics, but we could use it for, um, Hotel Motel for tourism.
Yeah, most, yeah, SPOSS is typically for things that are, are capital improvements. Um, shorthand is things that can be depreciated over time. Uh, but yeah, something like this should fall within the, one of the buckets that you can use Hotel Motel.
I saw it a minute ago, but I can't find it now, I've got so many papers. Is it, how much is it?
P and P, it was like right at nine thousand, I think. And that's, because
So this'll do, do purposes.
It would, it would be cheaper to tear it out and
Mm-hmm.
remove the barbecue pit, but I'm trying to make it very functional for everybody, for the Labor Day people and for our citizens, so that way it, it's, is getting benefit for both.
So are you gonna refurbish the barbecue pit? Or, or is it functional now?
It's functional now.
Didn't have water or anything?
It does need water, I think, uh, no, uh.
We have water.
Did you put water down there, Denny?
Water goes, water comes out that bathroom that's right there next to it. We have an outside speaking where they can run water hose too, man.
Okay.
Okay. So you'll be able to use this as a barbecue and as a picnic table?
And there's been several
Split it off and use half of it and half of it?
Yeah, we weren't gonna take the whole pit, we were gonna leave some of it open and just do the tables like either in the middle or on the side and have one pit still open just in case somebody wanted to use it. But we can still come and remove it, so it would just be
And this is the cost for just the decking?
Uh-huh, and they'll be painting it, refreshing the boards and everything else, staining it. Our guys take it off, it's just like a
Take it off and put it on as a meal?
Yeah, yep.
It is gonna be a little bit com, I did want to say, we are utilizing the school system with, um, other picnic tables for the farmer's market. I think this one was a little bit complex for them, but they are working with us on, in providing picnic tables at the farmer's market for that project. And I think you guys have both been working on that with them, haven't you? So I know, I noticed someone had mentioned that one time and I thought, well, I, I wanna make sure they know that you guys have been doing that.
They should all be done by, we, we had leftover lumber. Um, I've had somebody else say that they would be wel, wel, willing to donate if we needed to. But we took the leftover lumber that we had at the farmer's market and dropped it off to them about a week or two ago now.
Mm-hmm.
And all the, it should make around, I'm thinking, ten to twelve picnic tables and they should all be done by the thirty-first.
Awesome, that's good, that's good use of, uh, you know, working with the school system and the kids.
Yeah, we, we've got the power in at the farmer's market, I don't know if it's time to say that or whatever, but we've got the power in at the farmer's market, we got five slots, we're ready. The only thing we have to do is have Denny drop the grease pit. And we're ready to go, the farmer's market's ready, so we're gonna start taking applications. And Chuck is making out an application and an agreement. And we're gonna be able to take applications probably next week and start.
Are we gonna have a one-time fee or are we gonna have a, uh, percentage of the gross sales?
We are going to, the, the way I'd like to set it up is that we're gonna let them use the electricity and they're gonna give the, the citizens of, of Blue Ridge a discount. So if you take your driver's license over and you've got a Blue Ridge address, Doc, you'll get a little money off your fee.
Wow.
I know I'm gonna utilize it because I like bits.
I like, I like percentage rentals when you own a, uh, you own a strip shopping center and you got stores in there. But I, I'm fine, I mean, I
Well, the thing about those, the thing about those food trucks is that they usually travel around. They don't stay in one spot long. And I would like to keep what we have, what we get over there, I'd like to keep there for, like I said, if you wanna go grab lunch or somebody from the city where they can't get in some of the businesses.
I'm not against it, I'm just, you know, trying to make a few bucks here.
Well, I get it.
Okay, um, so are we ready to vote on the proposal Christie presented? Does anybody have a motion?
I move we, we build a picnic table.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, also Christie's been working with the downtown, the Business Association, I believe we have two representatives here tonight for our beautification project in downtown. And if you will, would you guys come up? She's going to set up a, uh, thing for you. And Christie, you're part of this, so you participate as needed to, um.
Okay, very good.
Oh, okay.
What you gotta get, I thought I done something wrong. Talking really, talking really loud does not get you recorded on the video.
True, I wonder, will that stretch, that microphone?
Give her, give her that one.
Or, yeah, there's, there's Dr. Whaley's.
Okay, hi, I'm Leigh Maloney, I'm with the Blue Ridge Business Association. And I am a flower lover. And I wanna wish you all, uh, Happy Earth Day today. Thank you for letting us come before you, this is
My name's Jamie Davis, I'm also with the Blue Ridge Business Association and I also own the Blue Ridge Bird Seed Company here in town.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, we walked around downtown with Christie, thank you for that time. Um, and I wanted to share with Christie the idea that we had for more flowers downtown, like what you see here. Um, it would be a program that would work with the city. And we would, um, it'd be kinda like the Adopt a Road program that you see where businesses or nonprofit organizations, schools, individuals could adopt public areas around the downtown business area and beautify that area. They could plant flowers, um, they would do the installations, they would provide the materials. What we would need from the city is to water those areas when necessary. If we're in a period of drought or something like that, we go by, you know, a week or, uh, without any kind of water. So, um, there would be standards, we would, um, you know, they would have to meet certain standards in order to be able to be, have the privilege of being able to participate, participate in that program. And we ha, we would have a limited number of areas also. And probably because it's so late this year, we're, we're getting close to the end of planting season. If you don't really plant things in the ground by the mid to end of May, you've kinda missed your, your window of opportunity for this season anyway. So, um, I don't know what's happening here. There we go. Um, so, let's see, what am I missing here? Um, one of the, uh, benefits for the business or the nonprofit or schools or whatever would be that they would receive or some type of plaque or little sign where they could post in that area that shows that they're the ones that have adopted or sponsored that area and they're the ones that are taking care of it. So this would be great especially for businesses maybe that don't have, um, a presence in the downtown location or even for the schools, so anyone, anyone within the community could be a part of this. Um, Jamie, I was gonna flip through some of the pictures that I have, do you wanna talk about the pollinator aspect of this?
So, um, by using native plants to Georgia, whether it be, um, flowers, shrubs, uh, small trees, things like that, native plants here, um, provide many benefits for, uh, birds, pollinators, bumblebees, things like that. Um, you know, that the, the Chamber's already doing the milkweed event. Well, milkweed, um, the, um, monarch butterflies only are species specific to milkweed. So we need that to continue their habitats, which are in decline and things like that. So by utilizing native plants, you bring in native species of birds, pollinators, bumblebees, um, the, the butterflies and things like that as well. Um, the different types of plants that you plant throughout the year will flower and bloom in different seasons, which also will include, um, migrating birds or, or whatnot. So it gives them a habitat, it gives them a food source. And it, of course, you know, if you're a bird lover like I am, you get the enjoyment of watching and, uh, seeing how they develop throughout the year, so.
So, we've identified, um, when we walked around with Christie, some of the areas that we think would be great locations for this. They would be public spaces or in high-profile areas that don't have any vegetation around them. The park is, is a, a very nice green space, there are flowers in the park already. But when you travel down towards Mountain Street, other than those businesses that already have a few pots outside their doors, um, there's really not any vegetation. There are no flowers or trees or bushes or anything. So, starting down by Mountain Street, everybody knows where this is, right? This is at Mountain Street between West and East Main. So this is a very nice seating area, it's a high-profile area. People love to take pictures in front of this Coca-Cola, um, mural. But there's no vegetation here, really. Now, I do know from meeting with, um, City Public Works employees that there are some, and I don't know if Denny, where's Denny? Did he, um, he may be able to speak to this. There are probably some utilities located under here. So we may not be able to do any in-ground planting, but there's no reason why we couldn't put some type of, um, pot or really interesting planter like a canoe filled with plants. So, something, you know, that brings in some color, brings in some beauty and, um, you know, without having to go into the ground. Also on that same corner, there's a lot of these railings that are up throughout the city. And behind this railing, you've got, you know, the air conditioner unit and some other utility things. But you could hang like a trough-type basket here. And you want to go with as large a planter as you possibly can. That way it holds more moisture and you, and watering is not as much of an That way it holds more moisture and you, and watering is not as much of an issue. But putting some type of planter right here adds beauty to that intersection and it also kinda hides some of that utility there. Another intersection, this is on the other side, so you have a nice park bench. You've got the trash can there. But again, this, you could have a planter here or you could have two hanging trough baskets on either side, which would add some nice beauty in that, in that area. So this is above the train depot, um, and this is what it looks like now. Previously, when it was a boardwalk years ago, it looked like this. And we wanna get back to that. We would like to add some planters along here. And I think Christie, you, did you have a chance to talk to the high school?
No, I was gonna try to, I was going to and I didn't.
That's okay.
I didn't get a chance, but I will try to go, cause I thought it would be good to get them involved and maybe, um.
Right.
Like the welders making something and I feel like then it, the kids take pride in it and the parents wanna come see it.
Absolutely.
Recycles.
This program is all about community involvement, everybody coming together, anybody who wants to participate. This is an example of a planter that the high school built. It's made of wood. Um, and it was done for a private citizen, but it's a beautiful planter. But it's a, it's a, a loo- much larger and it's longer and it would be ideal to have two or three of those in this area here, you know, spaced along, along that area and add some color in there. So there are a lot of corners, uh, within the city where it's just a big old slab of concrete. And it would be really nice if we, and I know there are some ADA compliance issues with regard to this cause you have to make sure that wheelchairs can pass where you have the ramps and that type of thing. But we could certainly take the measurements and we'd like to see maybe placing a pot, you know, a very large pot in the center on some of these. This is, you guys know where this is, right? So they're also at the corner of West Main and Depot Street where the visitor center is there in Coalbanker Building. You've got four corners there that are just big slabs of concrete. And it would be great if we could have some really nice big pots with, um, uh, thriller, a filler and a spiller. And if you don't know what that is, it's something like this. And the thriller is something really tall in the middle and very showy. And then you've got filler plants here and then you've got your spillers that are spilling over there. And it really makes for just, it's like a wow factor, so adds a lot of color and really beautiful.
You, you've done a wonderful presentation.
Am I going on too long?
No, I just, yes and no. We get the gist of what you're saying, I believe. But what we're gonna have to have is those areas, you wanna do that, we're gonna have to have a plan. What you're gonna put there, what you'd like to put there. It's gonna have to follow our ordinances and codes, like maybe sticking a planter in the middle of the sidewalk. That's probably not gonna work. But, but I love where you're going with this.
So I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And so again, this would not just, this would not be the BRBA doing it. The BRBA would like to be the first one to do it.
Right.
And we would like to do it in maybe this location here. Um, which are, one of our You Are Here signs is here and do it in this location here.
And that's understandable. What we can't have is just everybody putting a pot here and a pot there. I wanna stick that out there.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. I'm way with you on the same.
I'm a hundred percent behind the beautification.
Yeah. So again, we will come back and we, we would, if you guys like what we're talking about, we could come back with more specific details about what locations we're talking about. And then also involving the master gardeners because they can do plans that, um, make sense for this area and plants that would survive and that type of thing, so, yeah.
And then we're gonna have to check that against our code and ordinance to make sure that we're not doing something we can't.
Yeah, absolutely, cause I know we have utility issues.
And then you said you needed us to water those.
Yes. So there aren't water sources that I know of in a lot of these locations. And so we would rely on the City Public Works to, you know, make sure that these areas are getting watered on a regular basis.
And Gerald does that with, he's our park supervisor. So he has a, uh, a.
I know they have a truck, yeah.
And they've got a truck and then they have a water.
I'm aware. I'm aware. I've talked to him about it. Yep, I'm aware.
You've seen it, yeah. You know, and Jack, it might be a good idea even if we had, since Christie's kinda overseeing this project, if she were the liaison and then if, if possibly Denny made sure, where's Denny? That everything was in compliance. What are your thoughts?
Yes.
And then you could.
As long as everything's in compliance and we don't have an issue with it, like that, I'm, I don't care if you put flowers everywhere.
Okay. Awesome.
My woman loves flowers too.
Is that in the minutes?
Believe me, I planted lots of flowers.
Is that in the minutes?
The thing about flowers is they're planted and then they're forgotten about and they start looking rad.
And you make a good point and I would like to address that if I may.
Yes.
So this would be a situation where the people who have the privilege of being able to adopt an area, they would have a year to do what they wanna do with that area and certainly, you know, you guys would see the plans for that. But if they don't do what they're supposed to do after a year, they lose the privilege. And we'll have somebody else come in and take over that area.
Right.
Because it's important that these things stay ma- maintained.
Well, that's what our muriel ordinance was. We let you put a muriel up, but you gotta maintain that muriel.
Right, right. When it starts peeling, you gotta.
So you guys will have to maintain the flowers. And when they start looking bad, you guys are gonna have to re-plant them.
Absolutely. I'm with you one hundred percent on that. And that's also why I think you have to have a limited number of spaces.
Right.
Because if you have too many, then it co- becomes a little bit harder maybe to manage. So we'll add, you know, maybe we get to start one space this year and you guys can see how we do with that. And then next year, we had two or three spaces, you know, and then build on it from there. But again, have a limited and again, in those high-profile areas.
You guys will have to maintain them because if the guys come by and they see something like that, it's dead, they're gonna toss it.
Yeah.
Not in all, probably.
Well, we'll, we will hold, we will hold the people who have adopted these areas accountable. I mean, it, if they're not willing to do what they sign up to do, they lose the privilege.
I understand.
So.
I'm in agreement with that. Get us a plan and show us what you wanna do. Give us an idea of what you wanna do. I like the idea of the milkweed with the monarch butterflies.
Mm-hmm. So when you say show us a plan, so the BRBA can adopt an area because we're not talking about doing all of this at once. We just wanna start out with the BRBA.
Which area would you wanna start with?
Uh, I mean, I'm thinking Caesar, do you wanna weigh in on this? Um, Caesar's like, what are you talking about? So this is, it's kind of a big area and it kinda frightens me just a little bit to take that on. But I, I want something that, I, I like to see little pocket parks around the city. And this is across from the Hampton Inn. It's a, a big area. Like I said, it's got, you know, one of our You Are Here signs. There's a bench on this side and there is a, a poop station, uh, over here. So we would not do anything over here because.
You're talking about from the sidewalk back?
I'm talking about like this stretch. I might have a better picture.
Danny, is there any, any utilities in that area? Come, come here and look at this area, please.
This one. Okay, this is a little bit, this is, this is a little bit further away. So we're talking about probably this, this area here. You do have a utility pole over here.
Everything should, I don't think we have any lighting in the ground, right through there.
Well, we would definitely have the utilities marked, yeah, beforehand and.
I want you to supervise that right there to make sure and get, Denny's, those utilities, you go ahead.
So, yeah, we'll mark. We'll have our.
And we would, we would, things would not be, you know, flush with the ground. We're gonna add, you know, soil and, uh, composting and that kinda thing. So we want it to be, cause it adds, helps with the draining purposes.
Right.
Um, and, and if it turns out there are utilities there, then we'll do a raised bed. And we'll build some kind of, you know, thing and just do it on top of the ground. If we can't do something where we can actually plant. We've already got some day lilies here, so there are some things planted and we don't plan on removing the red bud tree or these shrubs here probably, so.
I, I appreciate you guys reaching out to do this and everybody, it's, I think it'll be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion?
Well, I definitely support it. So I'll make a motion that we have the, our liaison or our council person and Denny and the, yes, the, uh, the experts have come up with a plan.
Present a plan to us, get with Denny and them and, and I second that motion.
So we'll wanna move very quickly on this because we're at the end of May, so you wanna see a landscape plan.
Just take, show it to Christie.
Just the, that one, that one.
Nothing complicated. Just show us what you're gonna put there.
Okay, we've got to finish our votes because we have not done that. So we have a motion, a second, so roll call vote.
Yes.
And Christie, okay. So bring your, bring your plan to them, get, and then they'll get with Denny, make sure there's no issue and we'll go from there.
See how this goes.
And we look forward to seeing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be nice. Okay, uh, no discussion items. It is time for reports. We have a few reports we want to give. First, I'm going to let Jennifer, and before I move on, I'd like to say, all workers from the city, stand up back there. We have a lot of people who normally don't come to our meetings and I want to say thank y'all for coming. Oh, over here too, yes. Yep, so thank y'all, thank y'all, you guys for being involved in the process. Thank you for being here. I know you've been here all day working and, uh, probably would prefer to be home, but we appreciate your support in being here at this meeting. Um, so first of all, we'll have Jennifer. Jennifer's going to discuss, do you want to go first? And she's gonna give us an update on a topic that's pretty hot right now, which is our license. And we're going to give you guys a rundown of what's going on and where we are with this. So Jennifer, if you will.
Give them a good explanation, Jennifer.
So first, yes, thank you everybody for being here. We came together tonight to let the city know that with everything negative that is being said, we are working as a team. And we just wanted you guys to see us all here weighing in, giving our information and proving to you that the job can be done by the capable people here who want to do the job. So thank you, friends, very much. So what they've asked me to go over is, uh, the focus of licensing. So we broke that into two categories just for clarification. Um, I came in March the third and I was brought in to organize and assist Kelsey Ledford, who has that position. So I decided that the volume of the easiest to process was business licenses. So I, I told you guys that earlier. To break that down, the process for business licenses is a seven-item checklist. So we had a total of six hundred and fourteen applications here that needed to be done. So I took on that task, um, for the business license, which was five hundred and seventy-eight of those. So to date, we have finished four hundred and forty-seven of those.
I'm gonna show you. For all you visual learners out there, this is what we've finished. And you've got to keep in mind, we went, we've been through four classes of this, but we've also started a new process for intake. So we're trying, we, we were behind and we're trying to get caught up. So she has done all of these right here, these two boxes. These are fixed. These are applications that had not, that do not have all of the materials that need in the files. We're making sure that every file is done according to the ordinance. Whereas in the past, some of them had been left, they didn't have the information needed. We're not doing that. We're doing it correctly. And this is what she has, she's contacted all these businesses and they're going to need to bring us some, some type of information. Maybe their LLC information, it could be human stuff, but this is what she contacted. These are what we're going to, so we are almost, when I say we are, I mean you, you and Kelsey, it's not nothing. But this, this is what she lacks. So I am impressed. I'm a visual person. When I saw that, I'm like, okay, this is good. This is good and this is getting me committed. So that's where we are.
Well, I do not wanna take the credit for that. Um, there were lots of hands on deck. Um, that takes me to some of the other information. So Barbie Gerald, our court clerk, who as we all know has a million things on her list, did process a hundred and thirty-five of the occupational licenses that had their information. So it's been a collaborative effort and that is why that the staff is here is to show that we're all stepping up. We're all doing what we're capable of doing and still keeping our tasks handled. So thank you, Barbie. That was huge. Um, Kelsey has completed, um, in addition to her alcohol, which she's focusing on, she has done twenty-two of the business licenses. And going back to what Rhonda said, we are trying very hard to stay sternly with the ordinance going by that checklist. So those were, um, needing to be issued before she could issue alcohol licenses. So we kinda had to work together on that, pull those out of my stack of business licenses so she could go ahead and keep progressing with alcohol. So altogether, Kelsey has gone through quite a bit of that as well. Those alcohol totals to begin with were, uh, thirty-six and she has that down to twenty now. Also to explain to you the reason that that is moving much slower, just so you can get an understanding, is to complete one of those, one file, that's a twenty-item checklist. Some of the things are fingerprinting through the state. These people have to wait on an appointment. They have to go. That has to be approved. The information's sent back to us. We accept it in the program before we can issue it. There's multiple parts of, you know, underwriting and, uh, reviewing. So that is a big task. So just to say a number like, you know, she had thirty-six. Please understand, there is a lot more to that process. So, um, out of the six hundred and fourteen, we are down to one hundred and fifty-one. That's all that's left. And so money is the question everyone wants to know. Um, a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars was what was outstanding to begin with. But now this number also includes new applicants. So this number grew as we went on in addition to what we were finishing. So right now, we only have ninety-two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars of outstanding. But again, one other thing I wanna add to put that into perspective, I know ninety-two thousand dollars sounds like a huge number. The last Monday, I worked the first half of my day just on processing the incoming payments to our department and I put in seventy-eight thousand dollars. So ninety-two thousand dollars is not as out of control as that number sounds, just like the thirty-six files is a lot of processing. So a lot has been done. We are diligently working at it. We will answer any question that is asked, but we, we're doing everything we can. So, thank y'all.
And, uh, does the council have any questions for Jennifer? I do want to say with the alcohol license, I've been speaking with Mandy, uh, Cody, our consultant, and we are trying to make that an easier process next year. We are going to, um, hopefully make some changes to that ordinance so that those can be processed in a much more efficient manner without so much hassle to, you know, to the, uh, consumer. So we will work on that and hopefully get that changed. And then by next year, these files will all be complete. So really anyone renewing, it should be a very simple process. Um, you know, sometimes when you get behind, it takes you a minute, but if you do it correctly and you get it ready for next year, then it's, you're off to a smooth start the next year. So when I'm not here in January and there's a new mayor sitting here, they're gonna have it pretty easy. It's gonna be an easy process for them, so. But it's been tedious this year, so, but we're gonna get it fixed and, uh, work on all of that, okay? Um, the next department, Michael, would you come up and give us a financial?
Thank you, Mayor. You touched, ooh, touched on most of what, um, I will cover, but I will give a little bit more detail there. As the mayor mentioned, uh, my view, I've worked with the city now for five months and the city is in very strong financial shape. As the mayor mentioned, the city has a total of eleven million dollars of cash. Um, and the other two things which I would highlight, uh, I have been in finance a long time between New York and work as a chief financial officer. The city's credit rating is double A. There are very few cities or counties with a credit rating that high. Uh, and as I, I think I mentioned, the mayor, um, for better or worse, even the United States doesn't have a double A, a triple A credit rating anymore. So, um, it would be good if it did. So, um, it would be good if it did, but, um, like us, they are rated double A. Um, the other is, uh, I looked back ten years, because it's always helpful to me to look at history. The city's debt, even with all the growth of the city, even with all the investments that Becky highlighted and the mayor highlighted in water and sewer improvements and sidewalks and other things, with all of that, the city's debt is virtually the same as it was ten years ago. So this is something that was very easily handled by the city ten years ago, the city's in an even better position now to handle that. Uh, so I think those things were important to keep in mind, so.
That's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
That is, well, um, do you guys have any questions for Michael?
Thank you for the positive news, that makes me feel a whole lot better.
Great, good, thank you.
Yep, I, I hope, uh, I hope the word gets out there and that people understand that as well, so, um, we, we're good, we're, I mean, we are in a good place. Okay, um, Danny, you didn't really have anything else to add, did you? Or do you?
In your, in your packets, uh, you have the outlay for the payment project?
They are attached to the end of the class.
Um, basically it's something that y'all just need to approve. We don't have to put that out for beat anymore because that was taken care of because whoever won it last year won a three-year contract with the city. So all I need y'all to do is look at it, to let y'all know, we have one point two million dollars in, in capital outlay for the payment, and I think it come in at like nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four at, and so that way y'all can vote on to approve that, so that way I can get moving forward. So that way I can try to get it done before the summer really gets in full swing, so I can get them in and out of here.
So you will do all of them, or?
Yes, I'll try to do everything I can as far as, uh, where we're at. I mean, uh, there may be some issues where we may have to slide something because of whatever, but we'll adjust accordingly. And I'll keep y'all up to date, so that way you can keep everybody in the public up to date on what's going on.
That's Industrial Boulevard and several areas that really need it.
There's a whole bunch of roads on there.
Yeah, that need it. Um, I, I did want to mention one thing, I had, was approached by two city residents who asked for sidewalks in areas, for instance, going from East Second Street down to Mineral Springs. Um, they were talking about like people transvert, they can't walk on the streets and it's hard, you know, even one, one of them's a runner, okay, it's my son-in-law. But anyway, he said, "I almost got hit by a car," and I had someone else, but even like where, Kristi, where you live, like that street, it, it needs Depot Street, it needs a sidewalk. And you need sidewalks because people are walking even from the fairgrounds down to the park. I was thinking about kids going to the swimming pool, if they live in town, they have to walk on the street to get to, to the pool in certain areas. Now we've got them on East First, East Second, but those other streets do not have them and we need it. Can you and I get together and do that?
Just speak about sidewalks.
Okay. A little, good.
That is also, that is also on, on, we're going to change those a little bit, but.
But we need sidewalks, so.
That, to go back to what you're talking about there, I have to make sure that we, one, we have the right-of-way, enough right-of-way to do it, to make everything ADA compliant. ADA compliant has to be, you know, pretty much five feet, uh, to be ADA compliant. And in some of those sections, which like where Kristi lives, you have banks on each side, so it's one of those things where we're going to have to build up.
Yeah.
And if we don't have the right-of-way, then I really can't do it without getting the easements from the people, that'll give us what we want to do.
Well, I, I think that's a project we need to work on, because we need to be a walkable city, we need walkability to the pool for the kids, we need those things. And even with the high school, with all that going on, I know several years ago, I had someone saying, "We need them on Mineral Springs," you know, "to get down to the school, back up, you know, that way," because there are a lot of kids who live down in that area, uh, young people, sidewalks, riding bikes, yeah, so. Let's, let's make that a project, me, you and I can work on that one, if you want to.
But like I said, that's, that's in your packets, so y'all just need to vote on, vote on the money.
Can we vote on it now, it's not on, there's an action item, but, yep, okay, so does any of you want to agree to these projects? Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Um, Becky, do you have anything you'd like to add for your department? Okay, is there any, another employee who would like to add any, anything? Our consultant, Mandy, would you like to say anything?
Uh, thank you for having me, I'll add to what Jennifer said about the licensing, Mayor, the way the ordinance is required.
Come up here, Mandy, come up here to us, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, I'm Mandy Cody with Momentum Results LLC, I serve as your land use and zoning and development consultant. I've been working with you for about a year now, um, just to follow up and add to some of what Jennifer mentioned on that licensing procedures for both business licensing and alcohol licensing. In the twelve months that I've worked with you all, I think I've worked with three people on your staff, so there's been a great deal of turnover and vacancy in that office, which has caused a tremendous amount of training and retraining and pauses and starts and false starts, so that obviously puts the stress and the strain on the operations. Um, I sent Council an email about this earlier in the week, the second part of the problem that I think contributed to the backlog after I did the assessment was administratively. The applications themselves are very incomplete, they really don't reflect the ordinance requirements, and it's also very difficult to submit the applications as well as make the payments. So we're working now to make sure that applicants moving forward will be able to submit both of their application materials as well as their payments electronically. So they'll come in, in a much more organized fashion, we'll be able to date stamp them, we'll have a complete electronic record, um, and be able to more, you know, promptly review those things, um, as we need to. So, and then, and then people like myself who are primarily off-site, helping you all, would have, you know, immediate access to those materials and can do a, a more proper view. The third problem that led in my assessment to the creation of the backlog is really legislative, meaning it's ordinance requirements. Most significantly among those are that the deadlines, both alcohol license and business license are renewal on a calendar year. So everything is coming in at the same time for renewal, which creates, you know, a tremendous amount of volume and activity at one time on what is essentially a single staff person under your current organizational chart. So that is an, an issue. And then when it's not coming in electronically, it's not coming in in a cohesive manner, the application forms themselves are incomplete and not reflective of what documentation is needed, now that singular staff person or the team that they have put together, is what I heard tonight, is touching the same application number and number and number of times. So you're repeating your effort, uh, but you're not really completing the process. Um, additionally, and very significantly, is that both in the business licensing, which is technically an occupational tax certificate, and the alcohol licensing, we, our ordinances treat both of those renewals as if they are first-time applicants. So every time, every year, even if I have been in business twenty years, technically under the city's ordinances, I am supposed to submit the same set of documents, including my financial statements, including my fingerprinting, including my arrest records, including my lease from my landlord. You know, as Jennifer said, there's, there's some checklist of twenty documents that have to be submitted. Those are technically supposed to be submitted every year, even for a renewal process, even if that establishment has not incurred any problems or violations in the previous twelve months. So now, we have a number of, you know, we have two sets of applications coming in at the same time and every one of them is treated as a complete new application, which has to be reviewed and touched several times. So, uh, the recommendations that I have made to you all, uh, number one, obviously we want to put some, some steady staffing in that office so that we can train them and keep that office adequately staffed and permanently staffed. Number two, we want to continue to revise our applications, uh, so that they are electronic, they can be submitted electronically, and also that the payments can be submitted electronically so that they're more organized. We also want those applications to be complete and that they reflect the requirements of the ordinance. So as an applicant, I can look at that one application, I see everything that I'm supposed to answer, everything that I'm supposed to submit, and I send it in. And then hopefully the staff's only touching it one time, it's either complete or it's incomplete, right? And then the third thing is council can look at its legislative options, which means you can consider whether you want to continue to treat renewals the exact same as a first-time applicant, or would you like to actually have renewal standards, which allows a renewal application simply to go through a compliance review? Were there any problems with that establishment in the last twelve months? Did they pay their taxes and fees timely? Were there, was there any nuisance or violations from the police department or the state? Simple issues of that nature, we'll do a complete, just a quick compliance check. If everything is in order, then you can renew that application administratively at the staff level.
Is that not a state mandate?
It is not a state mandate.
So what is the state mandate for us?
For the business license, there's no state mandate.
For alcohol license?
For alcohol license, what the state does for an alcohol license renewal is they ask to see your local license and for you to report any arrests that have been made for the licensing in the previous twelve months.
So there's no requirement to fingerprint every year?
There is not a state requirement to fingerprint every year, no.
And we have a requirement to fingerprint every year?
You do, your ordinance is very explicit that says every application for renewal is treated as an original application.
I, I'll say too, it's unusual.
It is unusual.
Most jurisdictions have a very. So what you're telling me is we can streamline this, take away some of this nonsense, and we can have these things moving in a much faster timeframe?
Absolutely.
What do we need to do to do that?
Well, administratively, we're working on those things now. Uh, staffing, I hope you'll continue to work on that, that you, you have some good staff in those positions now that are very diligent and teachable and cooperative, and I've enjoyed working with them personally, so I hope they continue to, to learn and stay in those positions. Um, and then legislatively, you can revisit the ordinance as a council and you can make those changes.
I'll task you Chuck to revisit the ordinance. Okay.
So Mandy and Chuck says, "Thank you, Mandy."
No, no, that's fine, I mean, and it is, I, I will say, most jurisdictions. Yeah, I think you two need to sit down together and re, revisit this ordinance and let's get some of this crap out of here and get it running smoothly.
Streamline, streamline, yeah.
Yeah, because if we don't have to do this, that's just a waste of time.
You do not have to do it, you may.
That's why it's so time-consuming for.
It's why, because you think, every license is treated as a first-time original applicant every year. But your ordinance is very clear, your alcohol ordinance is very clear, that every application is treated as an original first-time application.
Um, I do want to say on that, I spoke with our city attorney prior to the meeting, we still, um, there are extenuating circumstances as to why they're not finished at this point either. So, um, we are going to, we're not actually do, we're going to do, we're going to allow them to stay in place. Now, some of these do need to give their license to the state, so what do we say on those, if they're needing it for state?
Well, I mean, for, for our purposes, I, I think people who have applied within the renewal period, um, and who have not received their permit, their renewed permit because of our form, I think we just let them know that they will continue to operate, uh, under their current permit until we get processed.
I agree.
Is that something we need to vote on, or is that okay? No, 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 I, I think, I think that's, we just let them know.
And, and if there's anything I need to sign as mayor, I can sign that so they can present it to the state.
Something else too, i- i- can we do an alphabetical and, and maybe jump these out so they're not coming in at one time? Can we do something that maybe we offset these, like the election we're doing? You know, can we offset them two months each and go maybe alphabetically or something and do these licenses that way?
Well, once you can, you can change the renewal period for the occupational tax certificate if you would like to do that in your ordinance. Uh, state law gives you, the council, the legislative prerogative to make your, your ballot year for an occupational tax certificate, whatever you'd like it to be.
But would that not still come back everybody at the same time?
It, it could, yes, because.
See, I want to avoid that, is there some way we can fix it so that we can have it broken up into maybe four boxes so they're not coming all the same time?
Well, the, you should give dates, and your ordinance does actually give dates for submittal of renewal, for, for applications. Uh, what the state says for renewal of alcohol license applications is that they are due between September 1 and November 1 annually.
So we got two months.
You know, as opposed to, it's December 20th and maybe I need you to review my alcohol license and I need you to do it today, and it's incomplete, but I have to send it to the state because my alcohol license is going to expire at midnight on the 31st. And so you, you, and you do have, actually, you have some suggested, uh, submittal application deadlines in your alcohol ordinance. And there's even a penalty right now, if, uh, I'm going off of memory here, but at, at a certain point, I believe it was December 15th, if the application had not been submitted, you should incur a 20% penalty. So that, that's another, uh, option that council has, is to actually enforce, set those timelines for application, uh, and give penalties for not applying within those designated timelines.
I understand the application, but am I correct, Jennifer, where's Jennifer?
She's right here.
Am I correct, Jennifer, that we done six hundred and fourteen, is that the number you gave me?
Okay.
That's what was there at the beginning.
So there's six hundred and fourteen, and we've got two months to get all those done, is that correct?
No, six hundred and fourteen was the total that was here upon my arrival, March.
How many yearly applications do we have, just give me a figure?
Do we know how many alcohol licenses are issued in a year's time?
I don't know.
You have no idea?
I don't know the amount that they had done prior to that, but I just know six hundred and fourteen was here when I came in March.
Can you get me an idea that soon, not, not like tonight, but soon? Because the thing about it is, if you, if we've got three hundred, that's a hundred and fifty a month.
When you think about alcohol license, go to restaurants that serve, convenience stores that sell, liquor stores, wineries, package stores, grocery stores, you know, Walmart-type of department stores that sell, big box stores that sell, so there are a number of alcohol licenses to be issued in any community.
Okay, Jennifer, you guys work on that for me?
Yeah, work on it. Yes.
And I want to ask this to Mandy, this was something that just some of us staff asked among ourselves was, could they not be staggered? Not just like you're saying alphabetical, but like, right now, the, the year end for occupational and alcohol is the same time.
Yeah, that needs to be different.
So could we move those apart, and then, you see what I'm saying?
Can we do that?
Like have occupational in June maybe and then alcohol, yeah, this, yeah, sometimes that can happen, yeah, that would be smart to do that. Okay.
Whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes to get it easy.
And we can have this backlog again.
Now, and, and we're getting more and more and more licenses as we come in, so we've got to, our system has got to be able to keep up.
I want to get an alcohol license from the city hall here.
Yeah. I'm going to excuse myself on that.
I can use a drink right there.
Oh, okay, we can all vote on that one. Um, is there anyone else from the city that we need to get an update from? Nope, okay, anyone, Mary Ann, okay. So we are going to need to go into, oh, we have public comments, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, we're going to open this up for public comments, everyone will have three minutes to speak, so if anyone would like to come up to the mic, please, yes.
Uh, my name is Paul Barber and just briefly, um, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, and all the employees of the department here for all the help they've given my wife and I since we've lived here, but, um, the people here have been amazing and we've been very grateful for that, so we appreciate that. Um, I missed a city council meeting in March, so I'm not up to date on the process and maybe not well-informed of the process of approval of development of the twelve acres across from Grumpy Old Men. So unfortunately, as many of us live in the rumor mill, we hear lots of things. So I spoke to the owner, who said the property's under contract, I spoke to the potential developer, and their plan, if, if what they told me today is true, involves seventy-five single-family homes, pickleball courts, and some other things. A couple of thoughts, um, there's three or four acres of that that can't be used because of, uh, water on the property. So you're potentially talking about putting seventy-five homes in a seven-to-eight acre slot. And unfortunately, one of the biggest issues in the city of Atlanta and across the nation now is the noise of pickleball. And people moving out of neighborhoods because of the noise of pickleball, and that's right thing. So anyway, I'm not real familiar with the process, but obviously it's a big decision, and suddenly somebody drops seventy-five homes in a very small tract of land within there, that because, um, I don't know the process, the neighbors and, you know, some other people are not familiar with that process. So anyway, more of just a thought process to make sure I don't miss a future, future meeting or back up and watch a YouTube video of it just so we know what's going on with an important development like that. But thank everyone for their help, and the people in the back have always helped my wife and I many times, and after you live in Atlanta, this is like a dream.
Thank you. Yeah, could you please, so Mandy has actually, I get, she can, she can give you an update on this, so. Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'll just, I'll speak in, in general about what the process is for land development and building permits, so if an, if a property project development.
So if an, if a property, project, development, parcel, however you want to think about it, submits a building permit application to City Hall, it is coming through a hub now, and I'm part of that hub, and I am a seasoned city manager and land use planner with almost twenty years of municipal government experience. And we have developed a team that has architects, engineers, stormwater experts, building officials, all the, all the expertise, review those building permit applications against the city's land use code and other regulations. If a project is completely compliant with the zoning ordinance and the other issues in the land development code and city regulations, then that project is awarded a land disturbance permit, a building permit, an alcohol license, whatever the issue, whatever the application may, may be. If a project is not compliant, then obviously it is not awarded a permit. If in a situation where projects like maybe were reviewed at the March meeting during the public comment section, if they require a rezoning or a variance application, a special exception, a conditional use, anything of that nature, then that is, that is analyzed at the staff and consultant level, but it is ultimately brought to the city council for decision-making. And there will be a written staff report in the agenda packet that gives all the application information as well as a full analysis by the staff and the consultants on how that application measures up to your comprehensive land use plan and your land development code and the criteria that you are obligated as the legislative body to measure their request against, as well as some information for and against. From a public perspective, our ordinance requires not only that we follow state law that rezones and annexations and special exceptions be published in the newspaper and the property itself signed for public notice and a public comment session be held on that project at the council meeting. Our ordinance also requires that for variances, and it also requires that adjacent property owners be notified in writing through a letter being mailed of the application having been received and the date and time of the public hearing that council will hold. So we have not had, I have not been receiving until just this past week very many rezone and variance applications for the city, but I have gotten a few, none of which I've even had the opportunity to look at, they're so recent. But if they come in before it would go to council for a hearing or a vote or consideration, it would be, it would be analyzed, a written report would be developed, it would be advertised in the newspaper, this property itself would be signed, and adjacent properties would receive written notice. Good, any questions? Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Caesar Martinez, business owner in Blue Ridge. First of all, thank you for clearing up the twelve million or whatever it was. That is something that, again, I think if our local newspaper did their due diligence, they wouldn't even written it. I hope they apologize to the city for that. One of the things I was going to talk about up here today, I was about ready to, as my father would say, cloud up and rain all over you guys for my license and my business certificate, which I still haven't gotten. So I'm in box three, I think, over there.
Are you in the non-compliant box?
I'm in the non-compliant box. I think I can, I can speak fairly intelligently about the liquor licensing part because we've done it now for a couple of years. And I will say that whoever was doing it in the past probably went down the course of common sense versus what was exactly in the ordinance because they had things like you had to do your fingerprinting every year. And at one time I asked Robbie about that, and he said, "Does your fingerprints change?" I said, "No," and he said, "Forget it then, you shouldn't have to do that." So I think there's common sense that has to be put into some of these things as we go forward. And I was really glad to hear that some of the changes that you guys are suggesting, and Mandy, and your group, I think that's great. The only thing I would ask is, if you haven't already, is maybe ask some of the, someone from the restaurant business here, get their input on what you're looking at doing. Get one of the business owners in town, get their input in what you're doing. I think that could help at least sell some of the changes you want to make back to the business community. So you might want to think about that. But the other part that, so that was going to be probably two minutes of my three minutes, so you don't have to worry about that. Okay, so it was two minutes, okay. The, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the fact that a lot of things that have been going on in, in City Hall, or lack of things going on at City Hall, I think could all have been avoided if the city had just appointed a new city manager. I think the city's too big to be run the way it's being run right now. I think it needs a city manager. I think this council needs to relook at that. You need to hire somebody and get it done pretty quickly. That's basically it. I think the city deserves that. I think the business community deserves that. That's it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, at this time, we are going to need to go into executive session, so if someone will make a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will be, thank you all for coming tonight. You're more than welcome to stick around, so, if you choose.